Gentlemen, you ladies in the front?
Thank you, Lord, for this day and for all the blessings of life. We thank you, Lord, for Jesus who died on the cross. We thank you, God, for this day and all your many blessings, Lord, you give upon us. Bless each one that's bowed here, each home representative here, leading God our hearts and our words tonight. Thank you, Lord, for the great position you are in, Brother Johnny being able to be here tonight. We praise you, Lord. All these things we ask in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under unfinished business, number two, we approve the minutes of the May 11, 2021 work session and the May 11, 2021 regular board meeting. This would do the work session first. Commissioner Patterson, any errors or omissions in the work session?
No, I've read the minutes and I'm good with them.
Commissioner Searcy?
I'm fine, sir.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve the work session minutes. Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Okay. All in favor? Now, we'll look at the regular board meeting from May the 11th. Commissioner Searcy, any errors or omissions in those minutes?
No, sir. I'm fine.
Commissioner Patterson?
I have no concerns with the minutes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the regular board meeting, the minutes from May the 11th. Make a motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, number three, under unfinished business, we have an award of a bid proposal for the radio console system for the Fann County 911, which is actually going to be awarded on June the 8th. So we're still...
Still looking through them, and we had put in the original bid request that they would be awarded on that date. So just to keep up with what we sent out to the vendors, we wanted to wait, hold off.
All right. So we're just going to wait today? Okay. So we'll put that paper on the gin on June the 8th? For the award, right? Sure?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So no action needs to be taken on that one at this time?
No.
Okay. All right, so number four, under new business, we have a request easement for ingress and ingress from Anthony Falls. And what this is, our Station 13 on Basska Road, right there where you turn in, you have to turn into our property before you actually get onto Skylight Drive. So it's kind of got him landlocked as far as that goes. I went by and took a look at it, talked to Mr. Falls. That appears to be the only entrance into that. But he's got to just turn on the Irish spot right there before he goes in. So Commissioner Patterson, you have any concerns?
You looked at it. I feel like it'd be all right.
Okay. Commissioner Searcy?
Emergency bid ain't going to mess with no emergency deal today?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, no, there's two entrances to our property. You can use any one as an entrance.
We'll never have to worry about somebody blocking that.
There you go. There you go.
And just if you want to take a look at this.
Yeah, please.
So our fire station is here.
Yep.
And this is the road, sure, just a little bit.
Oh, okay.
So we've got here and here.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Look at this too. And that's what we're talking about right here. So this is asking coming up, and they're the fire station. But we can have coming up this way, we can have here an exit as well.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I see. We're good.
Okay. Anybody else that want to take a look at this, more your welcome too. So I'll leave it right here if anyone wants to, okay? So I will make a motion that we approve the easement for ingress and ingress from Anthony Falls. Can I get a second?
I'll say.
All in favor? Number five, under new business, we have a moratorium on the issuance of any special event license for alcoholic beverages in the unincorporated area of Fann County until the amendment of the alcohol license ordinance is completed. Ms. Dawson, would you care to elaborate a little on that for us?
Yes, sir. Our ordinance right now covers the sale of beer and wine in the unincorporated areas of Fann County. We do not have alcohol sales anywhere in the county, in the unincorporated areas of the county. When this ordinance was put into place, there is no, where in the ordinance can you find anything about a special use permit? So say, for example, the Humane Society wanted to have an event and it rented the parking area, Michael Liston's parking area up there at Tocco River. You couldn't get, under our ordinance, there's no provisions for getting a special use permit because we don't have that in our ordinance. Well, through, we had in our application to get a beer and wine license, an application for a special use permit. Standing here right now, I can truthfully tell you I have no idea where that came from. I didn't draw it up. I don't know if it was in a sample ordinance that we might have gotten from the Department of Community Affairs, that we might have gotten from the Department of Revenue. I can't tell you how we got. But Christmas a year ago, we had an individual make an application under the special use permit. And I was like, we don't have one of those. And then the next thing I got was a copy of it with a complete packet that it had come from. So that individual, the former commission granted that person a special license for one time thing. We have had another nonprofit come and make application under the special use permit. And it's not that it's a bad idea. It might be a great idea. It's just that literally in our ordinance, there is no provision for it. There's no regulation of it. So if the commission feels okay with just continuing on and letting individuals make special, make applications until we can get the ordinance rewritten, which we're in the process of doing, that's fine. Another idea is just to say there is a moratorium. There will be no special use permits issued until the ordinance is rewritten. It's just one of those things, it needs to be a board decision, up or down, one way or the other.
Ms. Dawson, since we've done it before, would we have any problem with setting a precedence? Since others have done so?
Well, we have not. The one individual that has come forward and asked for it.
Yes.
Because there was, this board had taken no action, that they will be, they will be issued. It's for a, it's Wine and Cheese, not Wine and Cheese, Jazz Festival. But right now, we don't have any pending. So this would be an appropriate time because that's an excellent question. And I'd say whether or not you decide you want to do it, whether or not, whether or not you decide you want to implement a moratorium, that needs to be a board action. If you decide that you're okay with using the application, that's fine. We have talked to the sheriff about the one that we know that is coming up, and he didn't have any problems with it, given where it was and it was a, it's a nonprofit that's doing it. But it's just something that y'all need to be, I needed to bring to your attention and get a collective direction as to what we're going to do between now and the time you implement the revisions to your ordinance.
Let me ask you something. Ms. Dawson, is there any type of liability that can fall back to the county?
No, no.
Okay. And is it just beer and wine only?
It's beer and wine only because we have no provision within the unincorporated areas of the county for selling alcohol in any form or fashion.
Okay.
And quite frankly, that can't be done by a commission. The sale of alcohol has to be done by a affirmative vote by the citizens.
Right, right. So I just want to make sure that we're not on the places like these restaurants inside the county that have their beer and wine permits, that we're not doing anything to let somebody get away with selling liquor?
No, no, sir. No, sir. Absolutely not.
And we are working on a...
Yeah, we're working on modifying, not modifying, updating all of our ordinances. There's been some changes on the state level that's required action. And I now have a commission, a commission board that's willing to look at it because it's a process. It's a process, but it needs to be done, not just for this ordinance, for animal control, for our noeds, for our land development.
Important issues.
Yes, things that affect us all.
Yes, and the people, they, they're important to the people.
Absolutely.
So that, is all taken on, but well, let me ask you something else though. In the policy that we're going to have, are we going to ask them to maintain insurance and stuff like that when they have these events?
Well, I would hope so. That's going to be in the proposal too. I mean, like, one thing...
I just think you need to cover your bases.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and...
Right.
Exactly, exactly.
So are they, are we going to recommend or have also this policy that they have to have some kind of security?
We should.
I think you should because anytime you have a gathering of 200 or even more people.
Sure.
And Commissioner Searcy, there is a requirement, even in the special event permit, that there has to be a sheriff's deputy. That's why we changed it to sheriff. Because all of these things would be not in the city of McHale and not in the city of...
Right, so we have...
Right, and not in the city of Fort...
Apparently this moratorium took place tonight.
Well, it depends on, if you voted on it tonight, since you want to implement a moratorium starting tonight, because you're not going to issue any more special use permits until the revision of the ordinance, it's not going to affect tonight.
Don't you think that would be wise?
We haven't, we've only had two, we've not had any problems. And I will tell you that, like, some of them were for really good causes.
Right.
And like, I have no idea where or what the Humane Society is doing. They've had, like, when they had Taste of Blue Ridge, they provide, I mean, you could give beer and wine. But it has previously been down at what was Willow Creek, and it was in the city of Blue Ridge. So quite frankly, it didn't really come up for us. There wasn't that many big venues out in the county.
Exactly, exactly.
With Willow Creek changing its format, with Willow Falls opening, with Anola opening, with a couple of other of the smaller wedding venues opening. I can see where this would be a useful thing to them. But as I was talking with Commissioner Hensley about it, you want to set up parameters? You want to set up how many deputies do you have to have for certain people? What's the fee? Because you don't want Liz Dawson to start doing it in her backyard just because I've decided I'm going to set up a little trunks here to sell beer.
Since I'd see you.
Yeah, see, I'm already governed. So I can see where there would be a need. We're a tourist destination. We have people that come.
Right. Oh, I agree, y'all agree.
But we just don't have, we, as a county, don't have anything right now in place to police it.
Right.
And, you know, there's no fee being charged. Whether or not, there should be a fee or not, that's a discussion y'all will have to have. Even if we say yes, understand, even if we say yes, they don't get to buy it until they meet the requirements of the Department of Revenue, which has its own licensing requirement. But it's kind of like the chicken and the egg. They can't get it from the Department of Revenue if they haven't met the licensing requirement here. And we are, we don't have to worry about them getting it until they meet the requirements of the Department of Revenue, which includes background checks. I mean, it's not a simple process.
So do they have to go through this process every time for...
As I understand it, once you get their license from the Department of Revenue, like, the folks that would be supplying the beer and wine for the Jazz Festival, they already have their 501(c)(3) designation, and they already have their licensing requirements met for selling beer and wine with the State Department of Revenue. The State Department of Revenue has said to them, "We aren't going to give you this until you go get your little piece of paper from the county."
And everybody takes their time, doesn't it?
Yeah, it much. One of the things you might want to consider is Willow Falls can get a special event permit or can get a permit, it's not a special event, can just get a permit that would be good for a year. Tocco River Riverside Restaurant, it has a permit. It's good for a year. It has to renew every year.
Is there a fee on that permit?
There was a, there's a $10,000 fee initially, and then every year, it's a very small, but it's $1.50.
$150, both?
Every year. Every year. Every year. The county, when it, when the county set it up, which was at the end of the How Bruce, Tommy Ledford administration, they, they, it's expensive and it's tied to food sales. Now...
Well, and that, that kind of brings me to something. So, and again, just for clarification, if I pass and get my pour license, let's just say that, okay? And I start going to different venues within, in the county. I mean, if I'm going over here to this wedding, and I want to go over here, maybe it's just a question, how is that fair that I'm able to do that when, say, like, Tocco River Restaurant had to pay $10,000 to be able to sell it? You see what I'm saying?
Because one of them is a one-time event in Tocco River's year round.
But if it's a one-time event, but if I'm the person that gets to put on that one-time event at this location, and I've got, I've got my license, now I can go to this location and do it again because I've got my license. And then I can go back over here across the other side and I can do it again.
We're going to be watching.
If I do something, yeah. If I can do that every weekend, if I'm understanding that correctly.
And see, that's one of the things that will...
The cake.
Yeah, like the cake.
That's what I think.
And that's what I'm saying, we definitely need to address in our ordinance. And I'm not, I'm not being flippant. This is, there's a Supreme Court case that says this. Having a, having a pouring license in whatever format is a privilege and not a right.
Right.
So if we say to restaurants, "You have to do X, Y, and Z", and we say to special event people, "You have to do A, B, and C", it don't matter, it's not fact. We have to determine what's best for our community.
Right.
And we had, you know, facts are facts. I can't, I'm a history major, but I don't know if the facts are not, these are the facts. There was a change in administrations, and the current ordinance that we had went through in the minimum amount of time, six weeks. Two of the three were leaving, and this was their parting gift, good, bad, or indifferent. So it's time to look at it again.
Time to update.
Yeah, I mean, the $10,000 is really put in as a means to say, "You're not going to do it, and you're not going to do it, and you're not going to do it." Somebody's got to be dead serious that they're going to make money because if what you've got to do is overcome $10,000, that's a lot of beer.
Ms. Dawson, is there, is there stipulations in there or in this one that the county's got that they have to do background checks on the people that serve?
Yes, and see, yes, they have to do that, that's State Department.
Right. Do they report that to the county?
No, they report it to the state.
They do report it to the state.
And, and in our revision, our ordinance, we'll have them report that same stuff to us. There is a limit right now, 24 is all you can get.
24 what?
24 special events.
Oh, okay.
Uh, permits. That might be, and right now, it's tied to the facility. So it doesn't even address what Commissioner Hensley was saying about, "I'm happy, I'm happy beer catering company." But those are things that we need to look at. Fann County does not, the unincorporated area, does not have beer and wine on Sunday. So we don't have it on Sundays. They can't get a special permit to have it on Sunday because we don't authorize it on Sunday.
Are we hurting the restaurants, its businesses, that...
I would, I would tell you that Mr. Richter and the people out at Chiqui...
I can't say...
Chiquita Rustica would say, "We're hurting them by not allowing them to commit, to compete with the city of Blue Ridge on the same footing because city of Blue Ridge does allow..."
Liquor sales.
Well, not only sale on Sunday.
Right, right.
I mean, the position of Tocco River and Chiquita is that at a minimum, the new ordinance should allow Sunday beer and wine so that they are then competing on a more equal footing with the city of Blue Ridge.
Now, we can set the times on that, like, Sunday after church.
Yes, you can set those times.
Okay.
But those are things that we'll look at with the ordinance, and this is...
But now, we don't have to put that in the special ordinance, is it?
We don't have to put it in the spec, when we do the ordinance, if for whatever reason you wanted to make it different for special events. I'm a, Sunday afternoon wedding. I don't know. That's something that y'all could decide. But right now, what, what you're considering is, are we good as a county with allowing special use permits under the same guidelines that we have had back in December a year ago, December 20, December 19, and the current one, while we redo our ordinances? Or do you just want to say none until we get our ordinance redid?
Okay.
Ms. Dawson, let me ask you one last question. If we, if this, if we don't do the moratorium, will these people be grandfathered in anyway?
Oh, no.
Once the ordinance comes into effect, everybody has to follow the ordinance.
Absolutely, and it's a special event. Only thing, the only one that, the only scenario that this could happen, Mr. Patterson, is if y'all said, "We're good, you know, the two, the one we've had was okay. We've worked with the sheriff, this one's going to be okay, so we're going to be okay with these things going forward." And I get a special use permit to have an event at Anola on the Saturday before Labor Day. And I come ahead and I apply to you, and I get that. And then sometime in July or August, we change the ordinance. But they've already got their permit in hand. Then they would be grandfathered in.
For that one time.
For that one time. And what you may want to say is, "We're going to allow people to continue to make application, and if they otherwise qualify, under the rules that we got right now for special use permit, we're going to let you have it." With the caveat that the minute the ordinance is passed, all of those are extinguished, and you have to qualify under whatever the...
Starting to... Thank you. Thanks, Blaine.
How many venues have we got that's...
Well, I can think of right now, Anola, Willow Falls. I don't know if Watkins Bar. I don't even know if they personally allow alcohol. But those are three that I can think of. This past weekend, there was a wedding at, out on the lake. There's a large area out on the lake, they're working to pull it. I have no idea what...
Privately owned?
It's privately owned, but it depends upon what... Now, I mean, if you're serving it and you're charging for it, that's when it comes in. That's when it comes in. So I'm going to presume it was an open bar, and it was just what was gifted to, to the people that were there. But you're talking about, where are their possibilities? That's another possibility.
I don't think the reason we brought this up was just because of all the unknowns.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, it sounds like we need to buy new pair of shoes and fix this thing.
Well, we're in the process of fixing it. It's just, what are we doing from where we are now until early fall?
Okay. How long does it normally take?
Well, from the time your different departments are, have started and they're sending in, like, Keith and building permits and proper...
Land development.
And so they're sending stuff in, Debbie Jackson with the tourism ordinance that we have, 911, I mean...
Basically, every department.
Every department that's got an ordinance. And we, one thing we'll have to do at some point is hire a post-certified code enforcement officer.
That's my question, do we have somebody to go around?
No, but we're going to have to. We're going to have to. We've got to get them all in order. So everybody's in the process of getting their things to me. I think, what did we tell them? Do you first, July 1st? My first, actually. My first. Yeah, no, we stand things.
Well, excuse me, ladies. Does, does these places have to give you both their reports on their sales?
Yes, yes, they do. Yeah, because it's the State Department.
And, and we look at them and see that their ratio of sales of alcohol is...
Yes. And so, once we get all of our ordinances that we think we need to look at together, then my job is to put them in order. And there is an order that the state says they need to be in. And then y'all will look at them, we'll tweak them, we'll correct, you know, his to her or it to them. And then we will have to have two public meetings. The two public meetings have to be a minimum of two weeks apart. Traditionally, what's happened is you, your meeting starts at 6:00. So you have your public meeting at 5:30. We anticipate a lot of people here, we might have a public meeting starting at 5:00, but we might have it start at 4:30. Then we finish those two meetings. And anytime after the two meetings have held, but held, you can finalize them. So you could literally have one meeting tonight, one meeting in two weeks, and at the end of this second meeting, you could go into your regular meeting and adopt your ordinance.
And that's when we'll get to look over everything, if we want to do some adjustments?
Well, you'll get it before, you'll get it before. I'll send it to you, I'll send it to you on email, and I'll give you a paper copy. And your paper copy's going to end up looking like this. But it's, it's just something that's long overdue for us if you need to do it.
I'll talk.
Thank you.
And that being said, with, with the amount of ordinance that we're looking at and trying to rebound a little bit for our needs now, time-wise, I mean, we give, we had them made first deadline. Obviously, there were some that were busy and we couldn't get it in. So we're, we're getting close. But all that being said, it's still going to take a few months.
Oh, absolutely.
I look to the end of the year.
Absolutely. I think we'll be very lucky. And that's why maybe you do want to say, as to special event sales, we're going to allow them under the current conditions through the end of the year. I mean, that's just up to you, but I mean, realistic, like, we've got a lot of ordinances to cover. I mean, that's just up to you, but I mean, realistic, like, we've got a lot of ordinances to cover.
Much more better.
Well, we're sitting here with, uh, the chief service over there with the wealth of information doing that for the city. I, before I say anything, I'd like to defer just a little bit, and be very interested in what Chief Service thinks about it.
I just think when it comes to alcohol, uh, I just think that you need to have things in place that's gonna cover you, because there is a lot of liability. Uh, I'm not saying I'm a, a party pooper or anything like that, I'm not, but I'm just looking at my, my base. Our responsibility here is to make sure that we look, we're looking at the best interest of the people. So, if we're doing all that, and we just need to make sure that we make the right decisions that's gonna, one, protect us, protect the taxpayer and the citizens of this county. So, you just gotta have strict rules and everybody, we gotta go, we can't ba-, you know, we can't baby this thing. You gotta set your rules, and that's just the way it is. Inside the city, we got so many places that, and we, and we have liquor, so you got beer, wine, liquor. And so inside the city, we got several places that do it. And it's by God's grace that we keep a, a good lid on, and we, and we're, we're strengthened on it. So that's just like I was telling you about the, the security, the, the rules of the road say that for three hundred people, you're supposed to have one security. Imagine being down here, uh, imagine being down here at the Arts in the Park when you have fifteen thousand. Then think about when you have the Blues, they're also as big as Arts in the Park, and you've got fifteen thousand people and they're drinking. So, I mean, you have to watch yourself when, you know, there's, because there's a lot of children around. Different, it, it brings in, uh, all kind of people, and y'all know it. You see, you can go to grocery stores today and you don't even hardly know anybody like you used to be. So we're getting a lot of, a lot of different people in here, good people, I'm sure, but, you know, you can, but there's still bad that comes with good, so.
Now, you're kinda leaning toward the moratorium?
Uh, well, I'm not, on, on, on this here, I just think we need to tighten our shoestrings here and, uh, make sure that the rules apply to all and that we enforce it if we're gonna do it.
Right.
We don't need to, I know people might get mad at some things, but you know, law's the law.
Right.
And I think the fees, I, I just don't think that, if, if Mrs. Dawson and, and Ms. Walker are sure that we've got somebody that's gonna be going out here and checking these numbers, uh, and seeing that everybody, we're all playing on fair and level field, you know, as long as we're keeping our tabs and checks on it, uh, you know. On this part, I'm okay, but when it comes to liquor time, you know, it, it, the people's gotta speak. Then that's even by law?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, okay, I'm good. Did that help you, Coach?
It did, maybe, I'm, I'm torn on it, I, I feel like, probably since we don't have all our ducks in a row, so to speak, that, uh, the moratorium would, uh, would be a good idea. Uh, we could set that for any time, uh, a month, two months, six months?
Absolutely, absolutely, and there's not anything that says that the humanities, I didn't just pick it on you.
Right.
That they couldn't kind of say, look, we've always been at Willow Falls or Willow Creek, we can't be at Willow Creek. But in order to make this work, we need to sell beer and wine, will you grant us the special license? And, you know, you can look at it on a case-by-case basis, that takes up part of your time here, and, but we're just in a time transition. The other thing I will tell you is that we've had the sheriff look at what our special license is, and I use that term loosely because it really doesn't exist in an ordinance. Um, and he said that the provision for public safety didn't, and I've got the email from him, that he said he didn't see any problem with what we've got. I think ours actually says maybe one, one person per three, two or three hundred. I think it's, it's, ours is more strict than the city's.
We did set a fee though, but, well, in ours land, or Ms. Dawson's, just like, and it's all about, we have to have, and we need to clarify down to the, to the every letter, that when you have this, you have to have number one certified police officers. You have to, in the amount that you do this, there's a lot of money that goes through, so, and it's hard to get. And I'm speaking from experience, we have a son that's gonna be working this weekend, because this is the first one I've missed, but it's hard to get people to come out, uh, it's, it's like thirty bucks an hour.
Oh, absolutely, and, and-
I mean, 'cause you're asking somebody to come in on their off time.
Yeah, I mean, like, we've had, like, we had the band festival. We certainly are not serving any beer or wine or selling it. But we have to, just because it's your number of people, we have to have off-duty police officers, we have to have certified. And it's expensive, and, but that's a fee that the facili- that the, the facilitator has to pay.
And as long as they take care of those people and it's in our ordinance, I guess, or whatever we'll call this, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Coach, you good with it?
Yeah, I'm in, yes, your turn.
I'll tell you what, I would, uh, I would be in favor of putting a, uh, moratorium on it for thirty days to allow us to look, um, at our current, uh, provisions, if you will. Um, that way we can look at it independently again, and, and then we'll revisit in thirty days if, if you guys are all right with that. Um, I would, I would be up for that, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Um, if we can revisit in thirty days, if, if we come back in, uh, uh, two meetings or something to that effect, or in one meeting, and we decide we want to, uh, uh, eliminate the moratorium, then we can do it at that time.
Right, right. And, you know, we're not excluding any of that, because there's so many ways that, in the city, I mean, you know, there's places in the city that, they could do this, and it's set up, right, Chief Service?
Yes, sir.
So that would be a suggestion that I had, so, uh, if you guys wanna move forward, we'll, um, I'll make a, a motion that we put a thirty-day, or a two-meeting moratorium, let's put it that way. Two-meeting moratorium, um, on this issuance of any special event license. That way, we can get a, a black and white copy to see what we have, and, uh, that'll give us time to individually look it over and then revisit it in two meetings, which would be on, uh, twenty-second, June twenty-second, I believe. So, I'll make that motion.
I agree with that, I'll say it.
All in favor?
Uh, okay.
All right, let's bring us the public commentary, I know we've all been waiting for this minute. So, if anybody wants to speak, please raise your hand and come on up. Debbie. Miss Hope, I'm sorry.
Did you comment?
I said, Ms. Hope, yeah, I said Debbie first, and I said, up, Ms. Hope, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Debbie Hope from Sherwood, Pecaria. Um, on this alcohol thing, Fanning County put alcohol on the ballot many years ago, and the people voted, they didn't want beer and wine. It was voted down, Board of Commissioners, because beer and wine didn't have to have a vote, they crammed it down the county taxpayers' throats. I appreciate that you're gonna put a two-meeting moratorium on these special events. First, I wanna back up. According to Ms. Dawson, she admitted that she didn't draw up that special use permit, and doesn't know where it came from. So does that mean I can go to another county, I can get one of their packets, and for whatever use I want, if there's no ordinance here in Fanning County, I can just submit whatever form they use, and it, it gets passed through? That makes no sense to me. So if our ordinance doesn't, the current ordinance doesn't even address a special use permit or license or whatever for alcohol, beer, wine, why are we even considering it? It doesn't make sense to me. Number two, we've already had it crammed down our throats, and we had to accept it because the Board of Commissioners had the right to pass the beer and wine. But now consider all these special events. I kinda see where Mrs. Dawson's coming from on a wedding venue, but I also see somebody saying, Horseshoe Bend Park, it's a big outdoor place, let's have a special event and a fundraiser, and let's have alcohol at the city, or at the county park. There's kids there. I can see so many ways this can go wrong. So I am asking that, before you guys redo an ordinance, um, that you have a town hall, that you find out what the taxpayers, how they feel about having random locations that are gonna sell beer and wine. That you find out, do, do the citizens feel like it's okay to have a Sunday wedding and have beer and wine on Sunday? Find out, I mean, that's my request, is I have some form of town hall meeting, something where the citizens' voices can be heard before you make those decisions. Um, thank you again for at least putting the moratorium on it now. Um, I was shocked when I saw it on the agenda, and I didn't even realize this was an issue. Um, so I do thank you for bringing it out. I'm just totally blown away by that this is even an issue in the county. I mean, we already put up with it in the city, but not the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Ms. Dawson, just one question only, so, uh, maybe just to clarify something that she asked. Um, I don't, I think it has to be a, designated as a venue, or, you know, as a, uh, like, something like Anoah, for instance, I don't think people go to Horseshoe Bend.
Well, what, that's a county facility, so we don't, we don't have alcohol in county facilities or school facilities. Uh, I truly don't know about North Georgia College. Um, I know, like, the technical school, Athlete Tech, whatever it is, David Pickens, I've been to events there where they had beer and wine. Um, but to, to also clarify something that, that Ms. Hope asked. The issue has arisen because somebody came to Fanning County and asked for a copy of our beer and wine licenses. And on the back of, or ordinance, on the back of it was the application permits, the, the questionnaire you have to fill out. And the special use application was on what we as a county handed to someone. What I don't know is how it got there. But you certainly couldn't go and get Gilmore Counties or someplace else's. This is because we started this by handing it out. I mean, I know exactly who I said, we don't have one of those. And they said, well, this is what I got from the commissioner's office, previous administration, nobody here. It is what it is, previous, it is what it is, it's just that we now know this, we now know that there's an issue, and we're irresponsible if we don't address.
Got you, bro. Daniel?
Uh, yeah, I'm, uh.
Uh, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Commissioners, I'm Henry Gray, Mylar, I live at the top end of Cut Gang Road. The issue I would like to approach you about is puppy bills. They started years ago and have particularly been in my backyard, literally. Uh, I understand there was some question from, I believe, Mr. Patterson a while back, or the remark made that he thought this was pretty good because he hadn't heard anything. He hadn't heard anything because the last county commissioner told me he wasn't gonna hear anything I had to say about it. And I don't beat my head against the walls for no reason. I would like for you to do something. It would not be fair to anyone else in this county to subject them.
Mr. Ware, explain your problem, your situation.
Uh, individual who had dogs ordered seized in DeKalb County, left there, went up before they could be seized, and went to Conover, Georgia, his home, where he had seventeen legal complaints, and, and only two of which got to court.
But you have all these documents?
Yes, sir. I can show you every complaint that I received, Freedom of Information Act from Blenckley County, and Conover City Police handled animal control in that area.
Okay.
Three dogs were killed in this county within weeks of them moving here. Two pets. One, well, three pets, two pets were paid for the thirdly time. There was an arrangement drawn up with them to make certain improvements, physical improvements around the place, which, a couple of three of them happened. They were also to limit their dogs to like forty-six instead of the sixty or eighty that were there. That never happened. When I pressed the issue, I was told that agreement that they signed in front of the judge was unenforceable. If this ordinance in this county, and I was glad to hear this, were working on animal control, I really believe that that needs to be part of it. These individuals, they off, they bark twenty-four seven. I won't say continuously, but I will say continually, day and night. I haven't had a night's sleep in six and a half years.
And you're right, sir.
Sir.
Are you right, sir?
I'm right beside him, sir, about a hundred and thirty yards, I believe, is, uh, the distance between that kennel in my home.
I mean, roughly, it's broad.
Right now, his last remark I heard from him was sixty, because he was looking for help to help him there, and he was advertising sixty dollars, I believe it to be more, but that is the number that they set.
What's his name?
My wife was personally attacked online. Called too loud a joke, but you can't get three. He opened a page called Mineral Buff, Georgia. Ooh, pointed out Facebook that this was a census dedicated organization, you know, area with its own post office and fire station things, he got that taken down. He labeled me a pedophile on that page. But I had to go to his page to see it. Georgia Supreme Court says, if you have to go to their page to see it, you can't do anything about it. But the noise, the constant problem of the parking twenty-four seven. I love living here in a packed run of bridges on Saturday as good as anybody. I have no problem with a man with a pack of beels that takes care of them. But hearing puppies being mauled twenty-four seven, I went back two weeks ago. Neighbor and I pulled out the road, go up as a dog laying, rogue on his side. I figured it was hit and recognized it as probably one of those loquitas. Neighbor was with us driving, so it was his call, I picked him, stopped, and got it up, dog just laid there when I stepped out of the truck. It did respond to me eventually. I said, well, let me run it up to the house, let my wife take it there and look at it and call. He said, no, take it back to him, it's his dog, it's his problem. So I did. He came up to get the dog, and said, oh, I've been looking for it. His mother mauled him pretty good last night. These dogs do attack each other as, as attack puppies. Like I said, they killed three pets. They assaulted my wife's dog eight feet from my back door. Animal control says, well, when it gets to court, it's he said, she said. Killed two baddies, one chicken, footprints this big at the pen with dog bill laying next to it. Um, there must have been coyotes. You ever see a white coyote with yellow or brown spots? This is what I've been living through for six and a half years. Oh, and he was gonna sue me every year until I moved. But he's just wrong to allow puppy bills, there's been two bad cases up in here in Georgia in the last couple of years. We don't need that in this county. I believe it's going on, not to the extent that it has maybe in other areas, but I know at one point there were over a hundred and twenty dogs in that kennel.
A hundred and twenty?
Oh, by the way, they gave up their breeder's license, but he's still breeding puppies. But he doesn't sell them in Georgia, because you can only sell one litter a year. He takes them up, sells them out of North Carolina, and delivers them to people, I believe, at the Tractor Supply Store to avoid in Georgia. He, he, don't say he can't breed all the litters he wants. He didn't, he, don't say he can't breed all the litters he wants. He can only sell one litter without license. As far as I know, without large kennels, he's still required to have a license for a kennel.
You said your wife was attacked, what, what happened?
She wasn't attacked, her dog was attacked. Right eight feet from the back porch on a Sunday morning. She saw like four of them jumping. Two thousand dollars worth of vet bills later. I approached the man, wrote him a letter, through his lawyer and everything else. Did not, must've been coyotes. Like I said, that was all white coyotes. But, and you, Joanne suffered through it because at the same time she was going through, uh, diverticulitis, severe infection, had two episodes and wound up having her colon removed. And all the time he was recovering, he was letting us know. I even wrote to him through his lawyer again, asking him to control the dogs while that was going on, so she can heal. Couple months later, she shows up with cancer. I again let him know she was ill, she had cancer. He said, nah, I don't believe that trash. You already pulled that sick dump once before. Her doctor's office called the health department here to ask him to do something about it for elder abuse. They were that concerned without her state of mind. Health department told the doctor's office, nah, there's no nuisance ordinance. We can't do anything about elder abuse in that way.
Hold on a second. Ms. Dawes, what's the state law on noise ordinance?
Well, the county has a noise ordinance and this is part of the, I, I, I mean, Mr. Miler and I have known each other through this and I'm going to tell you that he has legitimately concerns. The state of Georgia has not been of any help because the Department of Agriculture, who licensed or doesn't license puppy me-, uh, not puppy mills, nobody licenses puppy mill, but licensed the breeding dog, has been basically said that this is a not issue. And, I mean, I, we need to do, this is one of the things that we're gonna work on with our ordinance. Um, this is one of the things that, one of the reasons we have to have code enforcement on this.
Well, you need to give us some time, it's new.
Well, absolutely.
We're new sheriffs in town, so give us a little bit of time to get our feet wet and plan it. And if Mr. Chairman and Mr. Patterson's in agreement, uh, Ms. Dawes, we're all working on this from what I gathered. So I hate it that you're not sleeping good, but, uh, 'cause it, it burned me up too, but-
It worries me more about your aunt than it does me.
Yeah.
That one was the only thing that matters right now to me.
Right.
More than anything.
Well, we're-
And I appreciate Ms. Dawes' part, she's correct. Door department bag did nothing. They did notify, I believe, someone did notify animal control that that, uh, bunch was on the way out here. They were fixing to be seized down in Blackwood. About two weeks before they were seized, they notified, they told Blackwood, said, well, we're moving to Fanning. We've already got the pen. And Blackwood just said, ah, it's late, I'm-
Well, give us time to research and let us-
Yeah, door department bag depends on the counties to enforce it. They couldn't pass their first four inspections. It took them over two years to pass inspection and that was it. It's just, I mean, like I said, again, the Dawes had done the best she could to handle the situation. I really think that she has. But when I'm told by a county commissioner, I probably hear anything you say about it. You have a neighbor problem, not an animal problem.
Well-
Anyway, I appreciate it, but it's important. We really need to consider not having anyone else in this county put up with or go through what I've been through for that, for the last six and a half years.
We're working on it.
It's just morally wrong. But thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? All right, we're gonna close the public commentary. Uh, that brings us to, uh, executive session. Um, I feel like we need to enter the executive session this evening.
All right.
So, we'll make a motion, uh, go into executive session. All in favor? Hey, I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll say it.
All in favor? In executive session, we discussed, uh, three things. We discussed pending litigation, uh, we discussed real estate and personnel. And at the present time, no action taken. So I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Say it.
All in favor? We're adjourned.